I'm gonna call the meeting to order and since I have no voice, Rick is gonna be my voice tonight for me. So, thank you, Rick.
Yep, and we will rise for the pledge of allegiance to the guests.
Start it up, kids.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So, these are some of our actors and actresses from our high school production and our middle school productions. They're gonna share a little bit of information with you about the plays and their experience.
Hi, so my name is Jordan and I kinda only had, oh, my bad, oh, there you go. Kinda only had like little ensemble roles in all the high school shows, but I still had like a lot of fun doing it and I think the whole drama troupe is like really cooperative with everyone. And I like enjoy doing it and I plan on auditioning for the um next role for the Spring Musical.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
Hi, my name is Jack. I played Frances Nurse in The Crucible. It was a very long show, it was about three hours. We had to do four productions of it, so that was very fun. Every, we raised probably a lot of money from all of the tickets that we sold cuz there are a lot of people at most of the shows and you know, it's just really nice for all of their contributions to everything cuz it pays for everything we have. It just helps a lot and I wanna give a big thanks to Donna and Kayla and Joni, the drama directors, for giving us the opportunity to do all of these plays and productions.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Good job, Jack.
Hi, I'm Lou Calvin and I play Jacob Marley in The Christmas Carol.
I'm Amelia Mosley and I play Christmas Past in A Christmas Carol.
I showed The Christmas Carol. It's on December 5th at 7:00 and December 6th at 2:00. And we, it costs about $5 to get in. We've also been doing it for twenty-five, about 20 years and it's a Sanborn tradition.
There's about tw- like thirty-five cast members and like fifteen crew and yeah.
And we just wanna give a big thank you to our directors, Ms. Wolf and Ms. Madsenheimer that directed and helped us through the whole thing. And our high schoolers that control some of the tech and help us backstage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to share a couple of other really important and great highlights from what we have going on at both the middle and high school. Thank you so much to our students for coming out tonight. It's amazing that we have middle schoolers auditioning for a high school play. And like we have a sixth grader with a pretty leading role in a high school performance. So I think that's pretty fantastic. So I wanna congratulate them all for their work with that and wish the best of luck to everyone in The Christmas Carol. I'm looking forward to coming to that and I hope we will see many of you there. I wanna give a big thank you to the CAF staff today. We Fresh Picks provided us with a Thanksgiving meal at the middle and high school, which is why I'm wearing a t-shirt. Our admin team decided to do team shirts to celebrate Thanksgiving. So if you can't read it, it says turkey gravy beans and rolls. Let me see that casserole. So we had a fun time with that and the kids enjoyed seeing it because there were seven of us and they're like, wait, I already saw that shirt. So that was fun. I also wanna let you know that on Tuesday, we're going to have the first of what we hope will become monthly assemblies at the middle school. In the afternoon, we're gonna get together for some fun and games and bring being a kid back to middle school cuz we think that's really important. So we're gonna have some musical chairs and tic-tac-toe and just come together in the gym and we're really looking forward to that. The middle schoolers don't know about that yet, but they might now. So we're excited for that. Our student council just returned from their overnight field trip. So we had nineteen students head to Waterville Valley overnight and they had a really great experience. And Ms. Solomon, one of the advisors, shared that it was amazing to watch them bond with one another and with the other students that were there. Today, we had a fantastic trade expo for grades seven through twelve. So students came down to the gym and had the opportunity to visit a lot of different careers as well as community colleges. And it was just a really great experience. I walked around and I think some of the best questions came from our middle schoolers, which was really fantastic to hear them asking these things. They had a bingo sheet they needed to fill out while they were down there and they were really engaged with the community members that came in to share. So I wanna thank everyone for taking time out of their day to do that. And also a big shout out to both our middle school and high school organizations. The National Junior Honor Society worked with End Sixty-Eight Hours of Hunger at the middle school to do a drive for Thanksgiving and they collected almost six hundred items for their food drive. And our key club at the high school is wrapping up their food drive this week to be able to fill over twenty boxes for next week. So a lot of really great things happening at the middle and high school and I wanna thank everyone for their efforts. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Nicole. Oh, sorry. All right, action on the minutes for
I make a motion to approve the minutes eleven five.
Second.
Any discussion?
It was a motion to approve the minutes.
You have no comments.
You got any comments?
No, I have no comments. No.
Oh.
Or June second?
No.
That was a second. Never good. I'm good.
Did you say June second? No, okay. Yeah, okay. All in favor? Yeah, that's good. All right. Do we have any manifest documents going around?
Yes.
Yes, we will.
You'll start, okay? And then nominations. We have no nominations for this evening. We do have one resignation effective December nineteenth. Abby Stickney will be leaving. She's a special ed teacher at the high school and we are, I believe, already have somebody lined up to fill that position, pending some reference checks and so forth. Superintendent's report. We had a, I think, one of the touch base everybody had a really good meeting, I thought, with the school board and the budget committee on the thirteenth. I think the roundtables went really well. Everybody had a chance to really ask some questions in a more informal environment on the proposed budget. And I really wanna thank once again our admin team and all the way to our teachers that worked on that budget, proposed budget. And that roundtable's really provided, I think, a good opportunity for us to have conversations about that budget as we head into the budget committee meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks. I have, and I wanted to let you guys know and publicly know for people, that we did update a couple of the budget documents for a couple of reasons right around the time when the roundtables were about to happen. We did get the updated insurance rates and the firm insurance rates from School Care. They averaged nineteen point eight percent and so Marie was, took a couple of days to furiously go through pretty much everybody's insurance and make the adjustments in those amounts for health and dental for next year. That allowed us to reduce both the proposed and the default budgets by one hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars and cents and so forth. So those adjustments haven't made in the slides, which I sent to the board earlier today and the default budget document, I sent you guys that as well. And there were a couple of other issues with my presentation, just some minor tweaks that we had to make to some typos that we have, nothing too significant. Most of it was related to the adjustments made to those budget items. I wanted also to parrot what Nicole said about the Thanksgiving meal today. The Cafe Services team does a great job of feeding the lunch line today for the middle school kids eating turkey dinner lunch lasted the entire pitch, which never happens. So kids obviously really enjoyed that, as did a whole bunch of the staff. So huge shout out to Frank and the whole team from Cafe Services for what they do to feed our kids every day and also us every other week. First quarter is done at the schools, I believe, all around, which is kind of amazing to think we're already that far into the year. We have recently, or will before break, during faculty meetings, we're redoing our restraint seclusion training and our mandatory reporting training that has been done, I believe, at all the schools already. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we are following through on that. We have the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the country coming up this summer on July fourth. And I'm meeting tomorrow with some representatives from Kingston and I'll reach out to Newton and see where they're at as well. They're planning some events and they wanna tie some of that into the schools. So I think that's a really great thing. I can just imagine something going up or around July fourth next year. I'm assuming that's what they are. And I saw a horse running around this morning, which I thought was interesting, never seen that before. But I liked that. I thought that was kinda cool. And we met in this room on the fourteenth of November with various stakeholders from local police and fire, emergency management from Newton and so forth. And a big part of that meeting and the sheriffs and so forth is to have a chance to meet everybody, familiarize faces, have conversations about some safety issues in the schools. And I know Dan is gonna follow up with some safety-related issues that they had expressed concerns about in the near future. And we also talked about something that is coming down the pike, which is snow days. And now we're gonna handle that. So we're there. I like to say one flake Fridays and peace out, but I mean, I'll chicken out on that, but that's okay. So we do have that decision and we've set up a communication device between the road agents guys in the field that are plowing the parking lots and so. I did see a snow report yesterday that has us getting something like seventeen inches of snow the day after Thanksgiving, which is never gonna happen, but it's coming.
Already got.
What's that?
White Mountains have already got it.
Yeah.
They're already over their record.
I heard that. Yes, they've had more snow in November than ever.
Chemo opens on Saturday.
What's that?
Well, chemo opens on Saturday.
Not that you know, you're tracking. That's good. I like it. I wouldn't mind getting back into that. So yeah, it's been a great start, great couple of weeks. All set? Yep. Thanks, Bob. Summer's not here tonight?
Nope. Not coming.
Committee reports? Any committee reports?
Policy personnel met this evening and we reviewed our policies, which will be brought to the board this evening. And our next meeting TBD is twelve three.
Okay. First public comment? I should give you the ground rules, right? Is it five minutes now?
Five minutes.
Yeah, so please state your first, last name, town you're from, and then we'll limit you to five minutes.
Thank you. Jeff Flanders McDougall from Kingston. I'm here because I'm questioning, from reading your policies and updating policies, about fingerprinting and background checks. We do not have enough substitutes. We don't have enough volunteers in our schools, but yet we're going to charge people, or you do charge people to sub and to volunteer. Why? It makes no sense to me at all. I first subbed here in two thousand and eight. It cost me, I think, twenty-five dollars and I was reimbursed my first paycheck. I never knew it, we were not reimbursing. I don't know what happened to my records. I subbed, I believe I was the only sub in the district in the fall of two thousand twenty, when the teachers had to be at school to do remote. I taught third grade remote until the students came back into the building. I had to leave because I'm immunocompromised. Every year when I got, or in twenty-one, when I got the letter, twenty-two, I got the letter, do you want your records on file? I sent in saying I'm immunocompromised, please keep my records on file. Never told, destroyed until I was asked to come in and sub in two thousand twenty-three to fill a maternity position. And then all of a sudden I get fingerprinted and everything and, oh, you, I paid for it and I figured I'd get reimbursed and I emailed Marie and she said, no, we no longer do that. I didn't know. And I'm saying that to people at Baking and they're like, what? We're no longer reimbursing? No wonder we can't get subs. No wonder we don't have volunteers. We used to have several people that would volunteer that were retired, that would come in to listen to children read, which was a bonus because who has the time to just sit and listen to a student read? We don't do that anymore. Why do we not do that? Because we charged someone to come in to volunteer. Why? It just makes no sense to me. I think it's wrong. And in two thousand twenty-two, I volunteered in the Epping School System as a coach for girls on the run. They do not charge. I had my fingerprinting done, my background check wasn't charged anything. Why? Because I said, oh, you don't charge? And they said, we want volunteers. I've heard of schools in Southern New Hampshire that have fingerprinting machines right in their schools. Why don't we do that? I don't think that we're looking to help our school system if we're charging and we're not looking for alternatives. Just my point of view. The other thing is Kingston is celebrating the two hundred and fiftieth on July eighteenth.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
I think, so I heard you correctly. You subbed before, you paid your twenty-five and it was refunded in your first paycheck, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Like, I think, I think the, you know, I don't know how long ago that was. A lot of us weren't probably on the board. That sounds very reasonable to me and I think, not speaking for anybody else here, but it's a deterrent and somebody works and then, you know, it's reimbursed. I don't think that's a bad idea, right?
But I think we're volunteers too. We need volunteers.
Yeah, understood.
And I think that's a deterrent, especially for retired people. Our taxes keep going up. I don't mind paying more money if it's gonna help get a volunteer in here, but I just think that our priorities are not, in my opinion, in order. I think there's better ways to handle this. My opinion.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
It's four minutes too. That was pretty good.
Sam Olson from Kingston. I have a child at Memorial. I just wanted to say, start out by saying how grateful I am to see real momentum behind the focus group, the idea that Megan proposed and that has been discussed at the last few board meetings. That ongoing attention matters. Structured, consistent parent involvement is something our district has needed and I truly appreciate that the board is taking this seriously as a part of a broader conversations happening now. What's becoming clear, both from the data you've shared and from what many of us are witnessing firsthand, is that our district is at a pivotal moment. Enrollment is declining and with that comes difficult decisions about class sizes, course offerings and overall experiences our students receive. We all want Sanborn to remain a place where students aren't just pushed through large classes, but are known, supported and given meaningful paths forward. Thirty students in a classroom is not ideal. Creating tiered classes that focus on similar learning needs is far more effective and starting this approach early gives students the direction they need to grow. One of the things I've always valued about Sanborn is the small school feel, where students can actually get onto teams, engage one-on-one with teachers and build real relationships with administrators who know them as individuals. But to keep that strength, we need to be intentional about offering growth opportunities that prepare students for whatever comes next. That means expanding dual enrollment, introducing enrichment earlier for students who need more challenge and offering career-focused experiences early enough for students to discover real interest and passions. Every student deserves to graduate with a clear path, whether it's trades, college, military, or something entirely different and with a community behind them that helped them get there. At recent meetings, we've also discussed the potential changes coming at the state level, shifts, shifts in how families may be able to use public school funds or choose other districts. That reality makes it essential for us to get ahead of the curve. Districts across the country are already marketing themselves more intentionally to retain and attract students. And while bringing in a firm might not be feasible right now, we can still take a community-driven approach, clear communication, strong storytelling, positive visibility and a shared effort to remind families inside and outside the district why Sanborn is worth investing in. Based on what I've seen at the Memorial School in just the past couple of months, when you give parents a reason to show up for the kids, they will, time and time again. Please keep this momentum going with the focus group and you will see just how much parents are willing to advocate for their children. Reaching parents once isn't enough. We all have busy lives. You've all advocated for yourselves up here and understand how challenging it is to fit everything in so you know that one mode of communication in one meeting time won't reach everyone who cares. You need to meet parents where they are and adapt to create meaningful collaboration. I can run over to meetings over here last minute because I live close by, but not everybody can do that. The people you see here are the people that are available during this time slot, not everyone out there who does care. Seeing other parents step up and seeing this board continue the conversation gives me real hope. I'm ready to help in any way I can to help move this move forward. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that's a fifteen count, so we wanna move on, right? All right. Thanks for the comments. Thanks, Sam. Moving on to new business, Mike, a budget update?
Yes. After the the roundtable last week, we just wanna give everybody an update on the process, the overall process, big picture on the budget. The budget is now in the hands of the Budget Committee and they're asking questions, have asked questions, have received answers and are now poring through the budget and deciding what, what a final number looks like, what, what they will recommend back to the school board and thus the voters at the deliberative session. So the way that works is the school board superintendent proposes a budget. The Budget Committee then decides to adjust the budget as they see fit within limits. Those limits are ten percent in either direction, ten percent in either direction. And then that number, that final number goes to the voters at a deliberative session, at which point voters can move to change that number again. So if they so choose, to determine what goes on a warrant article for voters in the, in the actual voting across both towns. So that's where it is. The budget is currently with the Budget Committee at the present moment and we're waiting for the Budget Committee's recommendation.
And maybe, excuse me, they next meet December fourth.
They next meet December fourth. Thank you, Bob.
All right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the Budget Committee meeting up already on the website from?
The video, I believe, was posted a couple of days ago.
Okay. Strongly suggesting there are people to watch that to be informed.
All right. All business, we have Gordon. Linewise. Were we supposed to take him sooner?
What's that?
Hello. Hello. Hi.
I would also like to make a public statement. I totally messed up last time. Couldn't remember that all we had to do was the contract. A hundred percent my fault. I was so cooked from doing the budget presentation that I kinda hung Gordon out to dry, which was totally unfair. So all we have to do tonight, I think, is just, we just need to approve the contract. Been vetted by the attorneys. I ran it by the finance and facilities committee. Gordon, should you just answer any questions you guys might have?
What he said.
Did I mention I messed up?
Yes.
Yeah, so last time we talked, the biggest thing was some, some language in the contract. Since then, we've had it changed. And so now I'm here to just kinda go over, you know, if that's good and answer any questions that anybody has.
In order to enter into discussion, I will make a motion that the board approve the Linewise contract as currently drafted.
Second.
Okay. And then I don't know if this matters, but this is for the filtering portion of Linewise is next we'll start working on the Classwise portion.
Any discussion? Can we bring that up?
Yeah, we just, the one thing that we wanna make sure everyone knows is that the, in, in the discussions that we've had so far on the filtering, this, it's kind of an arms race, right? Like, we, we've set up the filters, the way that, the best way the software can, can be set up at the current time. The kids will find a way around it. They always do. But they, we always then either patch it or go back to the, to the company, to Linewise to say, hey, how, how can we stop them from circumventing this? How can we stop them from doing that? So it's, we just want everybody to be aware that while this software is really good, it's always the case that some of the really exceptionally gifted technical children will find ways around it, but we are confident in our, in Gordon and in our IT staff that they can continually monitor and stay ahead of the curve.
And there was another piece of that, right, Gordon? Cuz the hardware component?
Correct. So, so with this, there will be a hardware component that sits, you know, basically right before our firewall and that'll handle non-managed devices. So any, any cell phone that joins on the wireless, it'll get the policies that we set for, you know, any of the stuff that we don't want, period, within the network. So if there's a case where a student can kinda get beyond the extension on their Chromebook, then that hardware piece will come in and will restrict it. Might not be as restricted at that moment, but it'll get the restrictions that, you know, we have set for everybody in general. And then once, you know, however they get through, gets patched, then, you know, they're back to square one of spending a couple of weeks trying to figure out how to get by, just to get patched again in a couple of days, so.
These kids, we have to round up these kids and tell them how to use their powers for good.
Also, I think there's always apps or websites, you know what I mean? Like that stuff is always, there's always something new every day.
Yeah. For, for every game website that gets blocked, ten more are created. I mean, I've, I've, I've learned a lot in the last two months of running this trial. Just one, you know, on how Chromebooks work because I don't typically, I've done all my testing on Chromebooks as I've been making changes and whatnot. But the different abilities that you can kinda, you know, get around stuff and, and have to figure out how to patch to, to restrict it, you know, has been very, very eye-opening, you know, so. Been, been fun, I guess.
Good, Gordon. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion, right? All in favor? unanimous. Thanks, Gordon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon. Superintendent's search update. There's a, there's a lot of information. So we, we got back initial draft from the Zeal Group. It's, all the members of the board haven't seen it yet, so we haven't released it. There's a couple of components that, you know, Sam, you mentioned, they wrote it down, structured parent involvement. That, that's in here, right? So I'm telling you that, that firm that we hired heard everybody that participated as part of the search criteria. It's part of shaping who we are going to find as the next leader of this district. So there's more to come. We, we have to, you know, it won't be a long review, but because of some of the, I think I can share, because of some of the comments that were made, there's some names that we would be in a legal issue if we just publish it as is. So we have to just give it a good once over. We're not going to like redact any information, but if there's something that could put us in a legal position, I think we need to make sure we cover that. But we are gonna share, you know, the report transparency and then there's gonna be more components for the community to get engaged. This is just the beginning step, so that's the update I have for now. And we have, we have a discussion with them, I think. We're talking briefly tonight.
I did speak with them today, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, yeah, we have all, all school board members who are able to participate as well, so that's good. Right. Thanks. So I have policies?
Yeah. So GBCE is second read. It's training information relative to child sexual abuse prevention. There was only one change. We just updated the language that's in red. It says prior to unsupervised student contact. So what that means is these things have to be completed. These background checks and trainings need to be completed before anyone can be alone with our students.
Good. Do you wanna go through them all or do you wanna take one at a time?
We have to take them one by one cuz some changes and issues that have arisen.
If we want, if we, GBCD would be the one that if we wanted to reimburse. Correct?
Uh, yep, but there's also another thing with that that we're gonna have to review. So, yeah, but that's where the reimbursement would go.
Okay. This one just adjusts the, based on the conversation we had the last.
We talked about this last time, right?
Right, where we said instead of within thirty days of employment, sort of waiting a month for somebody's back, not their background check, but them to have this training, the training would come before their contact with students or unsupervised contact. We sometimes have, you know, parents at practice or things like that. Or, you know, what?
A new teacher.
Yes, like a new teacher in the classroom, a new.
Yes, like a new teacher in the classroom, a new employee would have to go through this before they have contact. That is what we do now. There was a, a young kid at the uh, superintendent's office downstairs yesterday, going through all the training and we were hoping to get them all done, get his background check cleared before we can have him be with the kid. So we do all of this before anybody sees the kid. So this would just put a shorter tight line, a shorter deadline on it, which is what we do.
So I make a motion to approve GBCE for second read. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
That updated.
All right, um, so GBCD, this was for second read. Uh, but we wanted to have background checks done every three years. Dr. Dawson had spoken to uh, the union rep, so uh, we have some updates from that.
So I reached out to the uh, union about this as suggested, and the, the NEA representative they work with, who's not a lawyer, but she does a lot of those negotiations and things like that. She, and I won't read the whole thing, but um, she's not happy with this, not unhappy. She's um, preferred not to do the change other than negotiated through in the negotiation process. So um, my suggestion is that we simply, we pass this to get the policy up to date. What we have up to part J is the NHSBA policy. Part K is the part that was added by the board that I wrote up to add for the board, which is the renewing of those every three years. And then we would seek to do that through negotiations first with the Teamsters this year, which is the principals. And then we have the teacher contract next year and the pairs the year after that. Um, if the board would like to speed up that timeline, I can um, initiate sort of a conversation with the NEA New Hampshire rep um, about this and see how we would go about potentially. I'm not sure what the right legal term is, but work that out, so this might be a possibility. At a minimum, I think we should update the policy. That doesn't preclude us from going back and asking for this additional piece as well.
So I don't know how to make a motion on this, like, are we, cause to approve it or to hold it and review? Not sure, Don.
I think I would move it as presented and not including section K.
No, I think in order to be in compliance, I think we need to move it and then we figure. Uh, so I make a motion to move J, GBCD for second read. Second.
So now we can have discussion, right? Okay, so just what was shared with me. Um, the section K, so we're clear, um, was to have uh, the background checks done every three years at the district's expense, so no expense to the teachers. And um, the union rep, and I'm paraphrasing, but I can read exactly what their quote is, but basically said they don't want to do that and most likely will file a grievance, but uh, they want to hold that as a bargaining chip, paraphrasing. I can read exactly if you prefer.
Uh, either way, I mean, that's rough.
I just want to be very visible on what goes on, that's all.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, like, background checks are essential. We've heard people come to this meeting and ask for it, right? Because they have students in our buildings. We offered to give them every three years and we offered to pay for them and the answer was no. That's all I have.
I'm in agreement with Rick. I think doing background checks every three years is best practice in most agencies, most places that I've worked. I think if we're paying for them, I think things come up and we want to protect our staff, you know? Things that come up in background checks can actually affect other staff, there could be other things, so um, I don't know if we can look at doing an MOU or, or something else, but I, I am, I do think this is important. And I also agree that, I don't know if it's in this policy or somewhere else, but adding that when we hire people or volunteers, we pay for their fingerprinting. I think that's the least that we can do. But I don't know if that falls under here or.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't forget to resolve it tonight, but I, I agree with you. And I think the idea of, once they get a check, like, that's how it gets reimbursed, right? Like, that, that's fair. But anyway, I um, I think we should stick with this. So what was the motion?
So the motion was to approve it, but remove, remove section K, so we can move forward with it, so we have this policy, but then remove section K.
And approving it gets it up to current laws.
Up to current laws, and then we can.
We can work on the others.
We can work on the other pieces.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous.
So next is GBCD E, and that is a repeal, because this was from the old policy. So I make a motion to repeal GBCD E background investigation check exhibit.
Second.
Just to clarify, the previous um, policy referred to this policy for the list of offenses where you wouldn't be able to get hired, such as kidnapping or manslaughter. Um, the new policy refers to the RSA, the state law, which lists like 27 other RSAs. It doesn't even list the offenses, it lists the RSAs. So it's a little complicated, but it, and the idea here is as the list of offenses changes in law, the policy in effect automatically gets updated, so we don't have to go back and update it. So this policy, GBCD dash E, is unnecessary.
Okay, all in favor?
So the next one is JICJ, student use of privacy-owned electronic devices at school. There was just an amendment to a final section, so I make a motion, approve JICJ with the amendment.
So the policy we passed is pointed out by somebody from the audience, thank you very much, I think it was.
We're waiting for a second.
A second, my bad.
He's a little louder than me.
Um, sorry, um, said, the quote was to be delivered, a report about this was to be reported to the board no later than of each school year. So clearly we just missed the timeline in the policy. And so I updated that language to say the superintendent will, shall periodically review this policy in collaboration with parents and teachers and make recommendations for policy changes to the school board as needed.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I seconded.
Rick did.
Seconded the second.
Seconded the second.
Second, second. Um, okay, is that, is that the last one?
Yep.
Hmm, right, uh, school, school board goals. Don, did you want to try to muster through it or no? I don't know, did, did everybody see the revision?
I did not.
Yeah. Well, we had another revision today, so I don't think we've seen it.
I saw an email that was sent this afternoon.
Yeah, no, there's another revision, so, and since Jeremiah's not here, um, I think it's fair that we just wait till next week. I think we're there, right? The goals are outlined, it's a good, Don did a good collaboration of bringing all of them together. Cause some of them overlapped a little bit. I'll send out a, a second here, I'll send it out, um, and then um, we'll, we'll, I guess, vote on it next week.
Yeah, I am, I'm loving the data points and the therapist in me is loving these. Good job, guys. Good job.
All right, uh, second public comment.
Jeff Landers, McDillough, Kingston. I came to a meeting in June and at that time, I included myself, I'm saying we, we as a school district, because I live in Kingston, I do substitute at Baky School. We need to be a lot more transparent and, and providing information. There are still people in both Kingston and Newton that don't know that Baky is a lower elementary and Memorial's an upper elementary. And whose fault is that? Ours, because we're not getting the word out. Uh, last year I took a survey from SAU seven, sixteen, Exeter. They asked all kinds of questions, how can we help you? How can we get information out? It must have been eight pages long, but I was like, good for them. They want to know how they can communicate, how people can find out information. So they're not going to the voting and not knowing what's going on in the schools. We need to open our schools. Adults, parents, grandparents are not going to come out in the evening. We need to have events that are happening that people can come in and see what's happening. If there's a play going on, we need to somehow get that message out. And we have people that are 60, 70, 80, they're not going online. A lot of people are not tech savvy, so we have to find another way of doing it. I am very proud of whoever decided that, let's let the towns, at least Kingston, know about meetings. Because I get the emails that say, school board meetings, budget committee meeting, whatever. I get it the day before the meeting, but at least I get it, because I signed up for Kingston to get all, everything from every committee. And I like that. I don't know if everybody does that, but there has to be other ways that we can get people to know what's going on. Our voters to know, not the parents. Parents get sent information, but what about the rest of the people that are voters, that are paying taxes? If you want them to vote for our schools, you have to inform them. We need to get them in here. We need them to know. How many people know how successful the basketball team was last year? Minor people. If you're involved with the high school, you know about it. If you're not, when I said things, the people said, how do you know? I follow the NHI AA, that's how I know. But other people don't, so how do we inform them? We've got to find ways to inform them. At Baky, there used to be a senior luncheon for Thanksgiving. But after COVID and after we changed the, the structure of our elementary schools, I talked to the people last year about doing, they were like, we'd go to second grade. We used to have fifth graders that would be the waiters. We can't have second graders being the waiters. So how do we do this? Can we get kids from the high school to come and help at the elementary schools? We need to get people into the schools. We need the seniors coming into the schools, so they know what's happening, so they want to support us. And I think all of you agree, you want people to know what's going on, but, so I think we really need to think, how can we do this? How can we get people informed?
So, I mean, it's a good segue, I mean, we didn't, we're not sharing the goals, I'll share one, right? Okay, so, school board goal number four. And, and improved community engagement, trust and transparency. Enhanced communication and partnerships with families, staff, students and the community. Increased participation in forums and district activities. Improved survey results on communication and trust, like, we have to start doing surveys. Bimonthly engagement updates, like actually doing, like getting the seniors back into the schools. Post regular forums, expand communication channels and intake and include stakeholders and advisory groups. Transparency and engagement support collaborative district decision-making. And then we'll be doing bimonthly updates, annual community feedback review from those surveys. So that's one goal. There's another goal that ties directly into strengthening district culture, staff retention, well-being. Uh, I'm not going to go through them all, cause like.
But all sounds very positive.
Yeah, so, but what's really positive, and I'll just speak for myself, is that I'm in my second term here. This is the most people, the, the number of people that are in this room tonight are more people that have been in any deliberative session that I've been at, right? And it's great, because I'm seeing some of the same faces and there's, there's more seats getting filled. So we, we noticed that and I like it and we want to harness the energy and keep it moving forward. It, it does, it's a collaboration, um, and we appreciate it and it's noticed and we hear you.
And as a previous speaker said, not everybody is available in the evening come out. I, I can remember as a parent myself, my husband never came home from work until eight or nine o'clock at night. So I would hire a babysitter. So I have to go pick up the babysitter, go to the school board meeting and that, those days it switched between schools. So some nights I'm going down to Memorial School to a school board meeting, then I would get home. My husband wouldn't be home from work yet, I would have to get the kids in their pajamas, in the car to bring the babysitter home. Well, how many people want to do that? And how many people can afford to get a babysitter, so they can come to school board meetings? I'm not saying change your school board meeting times. You know, I think it's great, there are, you can watch them, you can watch them delayed later. But somehow we need to let people know that, because I've got to believe there's people that don't know that that's an option for them. And I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, we creatively need to figure out how to do this. It's not you folks, it's everybody.
More ways than.
The Carriage Town News is back.
Yes, I heard that too.
Yeah.
Yes.
What did you say?
News is back.
Oh.
And it's not going to be mailed though, right?
Not in print, yeah.
Okay.
No, it's print.
In print.
A print monthly Carriage Town came out today.
Oh, really? You have to pick it up.
I was exceptionally excited about that, because it's a perfect vehicle to do a lot of what you're talking about.
Another thing you could do is have a newsletter that you leave at town halls, at public libraries, and let people know that. They could pick it up at the town hall, the public library. And if it's online, that's another option, but for the people that aren't online, somehow we have to reach them. I don't have the answer, I wish I did.
Okay, I think your fish went over five minutes, but.
Forgiven.
So what, the firm I was talking about was like a marketing firm. So we were seeing that a lot at schools that have um, the school choice in the state, so that's what I was referring to. But I think the Zeal results are an incredible resource of information and a great starting point. That's why I mentioned if, how, actually hiring a marketing firm at this point, I think you were just handed a whole wealth of information to get started. But one of the other ideas was, that I, I think I mentioned to Jeremiah in an email, was how, we used to get mailers. We used to get an update on um, what the school was ha, like a newsletter each month or something like that. I don't remember, I was in school and I didn't really care, but I know that it came in the mail every month or so and it was an update, and that's a way to reach the people that aren't online. And um, not necessarily getting the newspaper, the Carriage Town is back, but it's, at least that would be some, a way to reach more people, is an idea, so.
Yeah, the um, so glass half full, right? Response would be, um, we have a budget.
No, yeah.
That is, that is, that, that needs to get cut, that has been cut and will continue to get cut.
Yeah.
Hiring a market firm, marketing firm's probably not in our cards, but.
Where's the half-full part?
Half-empty, I'm, I'm empty, I went, I went the wrong direction.
Waiting for the bad part.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess the half-full part is that we used to have, uh.
Well, I have a half-full.
Mr. Gray, right, was here. Uh, I remember his class of students did these presentations that some of my employees probably couldn't do, right? No disrespect to my employees, but like, they were phenomenal. So like, we probably have the same kids that are figuring out how to get through LineWise, like, can probably help us with the marketing pieces and, you know, the aesthetics and stuff. So like, we can engage, it's all good stuff.
There's a career training opportunity, a course.
Hundred percent.
Maybe.
All good stuff.
A lot of kids that are taking the marketing course at SST.
Maybe there's a marketing, maybe there's a board member who could help them.
There's a board member who does marketing.
Potentially.
Is there?
Yeah, all, there may be a 20-year veteran agency-grown marketing professional on the board.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we have.
Jack, glass half full.
That's the half-full part, is that we don't have to pay for something, potentially we just leverage the resources we already have. And activate the resources.
Fill us in the notes, just put down Micah as volunteered.
I will volunteer. We are, I am on the PR subcommittee, which is going to be meeting again soon, so that's topic number one, I would think.
Well, Jeremiah is not here, we should sign him up too.
Oh, he's on. Is he on that subcommittee?
I think he is.
He is on that sub, so he's, he's signed up by default.
Thanks for acknowledging, Ms. Beebe.
Hi, Elizabeth Beebe from Kingston. Um, just building off what the two other ladies said, I do believe that we need to work on PR. I work in the school as a para educator and substituted for 10 years prior to that and volunteered with all of my children, starting in nursery school. So I've watched the district through all its aches and pains and how we're feeling in the schools right now. I know the budget cuts are coming and all of that, and the PR is a great idea. Yes, it would be lovely to have volunteers coming in and more substitutes, because our secretary is pulling her hair out every morning, trying to keep students out of the library and other places to put people when there are no substitutes to cover classes. So with these budget cuts and expenses um, rising and teachers leaving, retention is difficult, um, morale is down. And so unfortunately, as much as I'd like to continue with the happy, happy, joy, joy, it's really difficult in the school. There are some personnel issues, there are some unfortunately great teachers who have left. And because some of these happenings are doing, have been done in the middle of the school year, we're kind of getting the people who were overlooked at hiring time during the summer. I don't want to say we're getting the bottom of the barrel, but we're having some issues with, you know, implementing new teachers and personnel that way. I really think we should also look at retention of our teachers who are tenured and who are doing the best that they can. We lost Brian Gray.